All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll call this February meeting of the Valdosta-Louans County Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. Everyone in attendance, please make sure that you've signed in on the attendance sheet at the back of the room. Before we will begin, I'll explain the process for the meeting. I will call each case on a case-by-case name and case number. The case or county, I'm sorry, the city or county representing staff will come to the lectern and present the facts of the case. After presentation, the board may or may not ask the staff questions. Once the board has heard the case and asked all questions necessary of the staff, we will move on to hearing from either the applicant or the applicant's representation. After hearing from the applicant, we will hear from anyone else who wishes to express support for the case. Finally, after that, we will hear from anyone who wishes to express opposition to the case. Anyone addressing the board will please come to the lectern and give their name and address for the record. For clarity and respect, we ask that only the person at the lectern address the board, and then the audience give them an uninterrupted chance to be heard. If there is important information that you feel we need to consider, then please come to the lectern when it is your turn and you are called. It is the interest of, in the interest of time, though, the board asks that you keep your comments brief and to the point. Please do not come to the lectern to only restate the same information that has already been given to us. Once the board has had a chance to hear from all sides on the matter and ask any questions we feel are necessary, then we will render a decision. If we do not feel that the necessary information is available to render a decision today, then we may decide to table the case for the next meeting. Please be aware that this board is here today only to address various applications to the zoning codes for the Louans County and the city of Valdosta. This is the only matter on which this board has been given the power to render decisions. We cannot and do not have power to address any other matters that are not covered by the zoning codes of Louans County or the city of Valdosta. Now, we will call the first item on the agenda. Louans County case VAR 2019-02, Ryan Adams, 2734 Long Pond Road, Lake Park. Ms. Carmella?
Thank you. Chairman, we have the motion of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Carmella Rata, and I want to talk to you. But our first case is a variance request by Mr. Ryan Adams. Some property is located at 734 Long Pond Road, Lake Park, Georgia. The property is currently on R10 and is located in Tulare's overlay district. We've been working with the applicant for a couple of months to ensure his compliance with the ULDCF, thanks to the minimum setback requirements. In this case, Mr. Adams is requesting a variance to the minimum side of setback to requirements he's beat, and the applicant has constructed a deck that is only four feet from the property. So he's requesting a four-foot variance. I tried to put together some pictures to give a visual of what's going on with the property. This is the view from the road, Long Pond Road. This is the visual front of the deck itself. Big old right corner looking towards the road. And that's the deck existing all in itself. The applicant is willing to do what he's due to correct the problem. We tried to work with him on the administrative variance side. Were staff can relieve some, but we couldn't do it to the extent of what was needed. So he's requesting a variance so the deck can stay where it is. Staff would be requested to request and had no objection or complaints regarding this variance request. I did speak to the applicant some to ask him to be prepared, you know, to have some options that he can offer to the board. This did come via a complaint from a neighbor, and their complaint was more or less proxy. And I believe the applicant will speak to you on what he's hoping to do. I also received a letter from a nearby property owner. I think he will have that, not that property he wants to relieve. Now the board can answer the questions.
Carmella, is there any issue with the height of the deck? Or is it just the proximity of the deck to the property line?
It's the proximity of the deck to the property line.
Okay, so if you were four feet back away from the line, the deck would be perfect with that?
That's correct.
As we've talked today, I have a problem. Being a property owner at Long Pond, these lots of record are all very, very narrow. Some of them are as narrow as 45 by wide. It's hard to take ULDC rules that came about recently and apply them to lots that already have houses on them. And buildings, just like the established shed is eight inches from the property line. When I went out and visited this property, I think the new dock, not deck, but the new dock, was put exactly where the old dock was. Is that correct?
It's where the dock was, not your opinion.
Okay, I understand. And another thing I'd like to come in on is if anybody has a place down there, privacy is almost impossible. I think that's where you go to privacy. I'd just like to make that clear. Has it been discussed about revisiting ULDC rules and regulations for that area?
It's funny that you ask that. We are in the process of looking at the current Tulare's overlay district, revamping what happened because of some recent occurrences down there. But to answer your question, when the zoning ordinance was adopted, which is in the early seventies, there were setback requirements, ten feet.
What were?
Ten feet. Knowing that a lot of structures didn't need that requirement, and they were considered illegal non-comforming, and in the case of legal non-comforming, you can keep what you have, but if you change out, reconstruct, you know, comes with you. So in this case, you know, the rules were 10 feet, current rules are 10 feet. That's something that.
The existing shed is still existing at just a few inches off of the property line. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I wasn't real sure when that structure was built.
I noticed that you made a recommenda, or staff made a recommendation for options to secure the privacy along the south line, and I guess that would be between the applicant and Mr. Ellis, who wrote the letter. What suggestions are you all thinking about?
We were open, and I wanted the applicant to address that. He may have some ideas. I think at one point, there was agreement between him and his neighbor on what could be done to address that concern, and I think he can probably.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here or somebody representing them who would like to speak? Sure. Can we get your address for the record?
Ryan Adams, 901 South property street.
Thank you.
Without the stuff that's already in the letter, as you stated earlier, this is the first page. I have made an honest attempt to follow all the rules and regulations. I was unaware of the zoning requirements at the time that I moved forward this. I've been speaking with lots of people, the zoning never came up. So this is my first remodeling job, so I finally did it. And based on what I saw around the lake, kind of where I went with it, and I took some pictures of the effect, this kind of what you see around the lake. Deck touches the dock, touches each other, so on, so forth. Based on the nature of the round, the rounds of the lake, your neighbor can see right into the backyard, no matter where you are. So that kind of came into play a little bit. So I redid the whole house, inside and out, top and bottom. Obviously, to do the remodel, you got to put those on properly, so. But the shed was pretty old, and I redid the shed inside and out as well. Fortunately, my neighbors, I was real close to the property line, it was fairly good. But same with, I redid the whole shed with him in mind. The dock itself, or the deck, is built way over the code. I put my neighbors in mind because, I mean, it's built way more wood than what code calls for. It's never been sagged, never been bored, it looks nice, it's year, year, year to come. And I did that with both my neighbors in mind. Because my neighbor, neighbor on the north side has a big boat house that looks right down on my house. So I wanted to look my screen a little. The dock itself is in the same exact spot that the old dock. And I built it extremely low for my neighbor. On the south side, I built a block to do the lake. To my, to the lake, the block on the north side, I bought a few months of boat house. And so I didn't do that to him. So I built mine really low, just for that reason. I don't have a boat house. It's just a really low part of the dock. So I did the same thing with my neighbors in mind. And originally, I had my deck built to the property line. I mean, it's touching, it's real close to his fence. But I had to speak with him, you know, we talked about it up as far as I could without tearing down my dock and my stairs and all that stuff. So now the deck is real perfectly even with the dock, and four foot is where it went. So I did that, I reconstructed all of it, rebuilt it four feet back, and subsequently, that I did change it mine perfectly, I did retain mine. That was it, you know, so. What I'm suggesting is, is, if you want, if you got approval of how it is, I still plan on building a twelfth of the property, which on the north side, my neighbor's built a twelve, a twelve property on his side. So I'll do the same thing on the south side, because it's a completely blocked, you're all through my property. I plan on doing that anyway. The other option is I can angle my, angle my deck back from my stairs, but, you know, that'd look kind of weird. So I'm going to have it perfectly straight, so. Whatever it is I do, I'm just here to find a solution and make everybody. There any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Carmella, you can build a 12-foot fence? That's a, you're allowed to build 12-foot fences?
In residential districts, we usually see maximum lines eight.
Okay, so you can build an eight-foot fence?
He can do it eight foot unless he's platform variance to go higher, which is fine.
So we could give, permit him here to build a 12-foot fence?
Yes.
Did he ask for that?
No.
No.
We have to advertise and meet again to go from eight to twelve?
To meet the letter of the law, that would be my advice, to re-advertise and put that as part of his request.
I have, I have questions.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
So the property has to go down towards the lake, so at lake side, I think we can get 12 foot, and then, you know.
But, but that's still outside the code.
Yeah, outside the code, I'm sure.
The fence that's there is owned by your neighbor, Mr. Ellis. Is that my correct understanding?
That's what he told me.
Okay. And sometimes it's possible to make a buffer that's not made out of a fence that gets to be taller than eight, or 10, or 12. Like if you put some oil and cypress or something.
What you're going to run into, because we're both gardeners, and I've already thought about that. You put oil and cypress in there, and in three years or more, it's going to be all over the place. There's not enough space there. It's going to be all over the place.
Some of them are a little skinny. You know, those ones that grow tall and skinny. We could put some plants there that would be manageable, that would grow taller than your neighbor, whatever. They would block him from you. He doesn't want you looking in his yard. He won't look in your yard either, because you'll have this natural buffers. There's some plant that you could consider planting.
Yeah, I spoke to him about that as well one time, but he really, he said I would love to put a little pressure to it. So, I mean, I'll do, I'll put the plants up, because I'll, where do you guys?
You're the speaker. I'm going to make another comment about any type of plants, trees. You're right at the water's edge. This is a perfect hiding spot for snakes. Because we dealt with it before. I mean, when you're down on a lake like that, you want it cleaned out around the water. We've already had alligators down there. You know, we have to call on that. And so that is, it sounds great, but any other place, I think it would be an answer, but.
Okay.
I just.
The east side of that shed right next to the fence is between eight and nine feet. So if standing on that dock, on that elevated porch, you would not be able to see over that. So you're fairly close. So if you imagine a 12-foot fence would be, could be even higher than that east side of the shed.
Right, well, 12-foot fences to me seems excessive in terms of, you know, the ugliness. That's just me, I'm a different person. You know, I don't like a 12-foot solid fence. I just think that that's more steamy than personal.
It would be eight foot of shed, and then, you know, 12 foot of the lake, third property stories.
Are you talking about taking this 12-foot fence all the way out into the water? Just right to the water's edge? Is that still going to, because of the slope of the line, is that still going to keep him from being seen? Or seeing you?
Yeah. If I stand on my deck, my house is elevated much higher than that. You can not build a house higher, I took my deck, and I moved it down in the backyard. But if I stand on the deck, you know, I'm six foot tall, so if you put a, in the deck, like four feet off the ground, approximately, that's 10 foot to my head. So I could do a 10-foot deck, that would hide enough for him to definitely see me, but just behind me, you know what I mean?
That would have been, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
That's what I had already, I went down and walked and looked and thought about it. If it was stipulated that the fence had to be six foot from the deck height, that you just get over to the deck, you know, feet over to see, it would generally be, probably still be, it'd probably still be around 10 feet, but it wouldn't be quite as high, maybe not quite as noticeably high. And that'd use your privacy on Steve's side, Mr. Ellis. Unless you're a basketball player, six foot six, or.
Right.
Could I ask you a comment? To get this additional high of fence, does he have to pay a new application then?
We wouldn't charge him, because it's something the board is initiating with business. But with a question, would there be any visibility issues, the neighbor complaining to give that height to this, height of fence is placed there? Would it block anything?
Is it going to block a view of the lake? The neighbor's view of the lake?
Uh, it might.
In our fairness to every resident, there is no panoramic view unless you're on one end or the other, where the, I mean, we all, everybody, you don't want somebody putting a house out on the lake. But there's no such thing. You can ride that entire lake. There's no such thing as not looking to the left or right and not having your view obstructed to a degree. That's just by nature of the way it's laid out.
If I had to, I can back my deck, my deck into my back door, and I still be able to see in my, because my deck, I have so much higher. If I had to demonstrate, if I had to put it around, not be able to see in my door.
Is this, is this, is this your residence, or is this rental property, or?
This is a rental home.
Okay. And he is a permanent resident next door, isn't he?
Have you had any comments from the other neighbors?
Nothing positive comment about what I've done so far.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody here who would like to speak against this application? Carmella, did anybody contact your office? Any questions, anything?
Other than, which we all have, the northern, the local.
Okay. Does anybody else on the board have any other questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve, as requested, there is. With the option of Mr. Adams putting up a 10 foot, is that what we said, 10 foot, or 12?
I heard 12. I know eight is the maximum ULDC allows. But if we're going to grant a variance to that requirement, then we may want to re-advertise this stuff.
I have a suggestion. The foot line is falling off. And older, if you stipulate it has to be 12 feet, then as it comes up, it's going to be huge up here. That's what I was saying. I was thinking, like I said, if you started at the edge of the utility building, and it was six foot higher than the deck at that point, and it followed it flat out, you would take that as a minimal.
That's exactly what you mean.
It won't solve the problem of being more than eight feet, because it's three, four foot or more out than it goes. But at least you don't have the following line, you know?
At the height of the shed, where the roof is there, how tall is that?
Eight to nine feet, yeah.
From the ground, not the deck.
Right, from the ground to eight feet. So we said from, to stay in line, he can't help it if the ground falls away to the lake. So we say to make it at the eight-foot height, and straight across then to the edge of the water, however it ends up, and then, I think we wouldn't have to, because it's eight feet and the ground falls away.
When I stood on my deck, if that, if that fence went to the top of that deed, I would not have been able to see over. I'm a little bit short of the system.
I know what you're saying. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay, same. It's an eight-foot.
It's an eight-foot.
From the ground, from the ground level.
At the, at the edge of the shed, it's eight feet. And then go out to the lake at that same.
It'll be level. It won't be parallel to the ground.
Right, it'll be parallel, it'll be level at the top.
And it's going to be more than eight foot out there, but we specified.
Eight feet at the corner of the shed.
From the corner?
Which corner?
The corner plus to the lake.
Yeah.
The western edge of the.
There's no sense in building a fence where there's a building standing there. That's a waste of money.
That's just going to take.
Yeah. Does that make sense, sir? What we're saying?
Do we need a variance if it's just going to go straight out, not follow the western line?
A variance, I mean, we can, it'd be a condition.
A condition.
For him to build fence. That'd be a condition of the.
Yep.
Major from the south.
Yeah, where the corner.
Sheen.
Sheen. Four, eight.
To the one side. Then that's level at the top.
That satisfies, at least in my mind, satisfies privacy on both sides.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, thank you for the comments. All right. Next case that we will call will be Valdosta case 8218-09, Wally Myers, 2528 Millers Drive.
Sorry, can I have a minute? The first case is, my name is Wally Myers. He is located at 2528 Long Pond Drive, in North City, in Millers Drive residence. The Millers House. The last question in front of you is because Mr. Myers has a concrete patio that he would like to extend to his workroom, also connecting the house to an existing accessory structure. He also intends to build an additional room, but the additional room needs setbacks, so that it's not a part of the variance request. The fair request is to the rear door setback, because he purchased, he wants to, as I said, but he made rear guard, the rear balcony one. The rear door setback, the marketing's only distance is 25 feet. He wants to, they, eleven feet, seven inches from the rear balcony. So he's asking for a variance of 14 feet, five inches. That's 24, we can consider in-house, straight in. So that's blocking the front. His patio is covered in concrete. You can see the accessory structure that he wants to connect the work to, as well as fixing. And you can see the under single family residence that is down our opposite street. Site plan shows the extension and the accessory structure. The accessory structure, site plan, does leave a gap in the rear balcony. Some are setbacks for the accessory structure. So the only variance is 400 on setback for the renovation. Stack removed, and floor to lake, not finding mars yet. And any questions?
Was there a previous application for the existing work storage building room that's there? It's, okay, and that's just considered an accessory structure, though? Right?
Yes.
Okay. But it still has to be within the setbacks, doesn't it?
Yeah, it should be, yes, sir.
Okay. Mark?
Can you come back to that picture, that picture of the backyard?
I guess from different angles.
So he wants to come off of the roof, or off of the wall, with a roof going over to the chimney?
Correct, yes, sir.
Correct, yes, sir.
Any other questions?
And Mr. Myers?
Yes. Mr. Myers, would you like to speak, or somebody else?
Yes, uh, I'm in Wally Myers, like I said, twenty five twenty eight now. And, uh, on that patio, I mean, it was like, sometimes it's too hard. One time you go like five, five ways up, and one time you take, you get from the roof. So when I thought about putting the roof forward, it could slide shut, I closed up, I did enjoy that. I could tighten, and come from the, from the body, couldn't control it, and, and it was just. It was like I wanted to do. And, uh, like I said, all, I used a problem on that, they have a problem with it. One, you fall straight, one, you slide, one, behind, they have a problem with it. And I, I didn't know, hey, a variance, still got a variance.
Um, can you tell me how long, how long ago was the, uh, the existing work storage building?
Oh, it was built about two thousand six or seven.
Okay.
To go back to Tracy, yes, the fireplace meets the side yard setback, is that correct?
Side bar, top, you say, yes. The, he, non, non, yes.
Correct, approximately.
Approximately.
And this is a variance to the rear yard setback.
An extension addition, one of the modifications.
And this will be, uh, but there's not any need for the room addition, which is behind this. That room addition? Oh, no, no, I see.
The room addition meets everything, there's, there's no request of variance on that.
This is, I see, this is the backyard. This is, okay.
Thirteen and a half feet, thirteen feet five, five inches. Rear yard setback is what about the, these thirteen feet five inches.
And the accessory structure of the fireplace is allowed in that, but not the original built. And I have a question for you, sir. This is going to become a part of your home, you're going to entertain and make your own.
Yes.
So it's not just going to be accessory anymore, it's going to be an addition.
Yes. That'd be my question.
I understand now, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is it going to be enclosed, or is it going to be open?
It's going to be open, and, uh, right now, me and the builder, we're trying to come up with something I did one, closed off, some slide shutters. The old and closed, it's about sliding, those old and others. We, we are not sure how we can do that yet, but we might have slide shutter, closed off.
If, if he starts putting sliding doors, shutters, anything like that, now we are not extending a roof, roof line, we are building additional building, and that's not what we advertised, or asked for in the advertisement. And I don't know, I, I think I'm going to have a problem with the, the fact that this is eventually going to be a room, not just a roof line. And this is potentially a way to eat the whole apple without paying and doing everything right.
So, so like I said, I was, that was an addition that I would, I would like to pay. I can do without the shutters, if I have to, but.
Well, do, do you understand what I'm saying, what was asked for and what was advertised was a roof line? No walls, no shutters, no glass, no, no nothing, all over.
Now, we asked for a outdoor bathroom. In the corner, in the corner of out there, in the corner of.
The, the part that's built, where the.
Where, where's coming out of there? We asked for a bathroom, now which will be lost?
And that doesn't, that doesn't mean any variance is.
Right.
Because that means setback, it's extending your line, it does not.
Okay. But, uh, like I said, I can do without the shutters, which is something I would like to add, and we should include, ask for.
And that was, that had not been on the previous application.
Well, just, you can pour concrete all the way up to the property, you just can't build them.
Right.
And I, I sort of restricted that concept a little bit by saying, when they built the big chimney, that, okay, maybe that's just part of the patio, it's not part of the house structure, so maybe we can look a little bit sideways or whatever with that and accept it. When we start bringing the roof line out and tying into it, as long as it is a roof line and nothing else, then I can probably live with that and not vote against it, but, like I said, as soon as we start talking about, well, maybe in a couple of years or six months, we're going to start building some walls in there, they don't be moving. Then that's, that's not the spirit of what I saw either, and I can't vote.
Tracy, wouldn't that be picked up in a building permit, because he would have to go back and get a new permit, and that's when it would kick in, that there's going to be more than just a new roof line, there's going to be walls, insulation, um, whatever, yeah.
So I would have to go back and read up on that, sort of, bring up the permit, about five, four days.
And that would be if he's going to go back and make that heated square stick part of that. I, were you planning on running electricity out there?
Yes.
And how is that going to do? It's going to be from, in the, in the overhead, or it's going to be in, in side bits?
It's going to come through, I mean, well, we, as they put roofing, this will be the wire, it'll be here for the roof, it'll come with this, the wire from out.
Okay, and then how are you going to reach it, if it's in the roof? How will you reach it, you're going to plug into the, to the?
Now, I'll, I'll probably see, when, when the bill was coming in, they would take the existing wire in the roof.
Right.
And bring it out to the new roof.
Okay.
And the wire will come down, uh, the wire is already in the fireplace, for the switches and everything. When, when they built the fireplace, they built the fireplace with wire and plugs already, and when they,
Oh.
And when they put the roof in, they, well, the wire runs through the roof. And see, the storage house is already wired.
Right.
It's going to become part of the storage house. Any, any other questions?
Not for me.
Martin? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody here who would like to speak against this application? Tracy, did we receive any contact regarding this application?
Yeah.
Okay. Is anybody else on board, have any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to grant the setback variance. As presented with the stipulation that this is a roof line only. Signing criteria D.
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Uh, all those against? One. Uh, variance passes, thank you, sir. Appreciate it, make it look nice.
Thank you, ma'am.
I don't know if I'm carrying on the mission. All right, the next application is A P P two zero one nine dash oh one, Dalton Signs, thirty six forty five, Air Perimeter Road.
Your last suitcase is for Friendly Express signage, along with signs. They are requesting variances regarding their field can be signed. Offering is one point seven acres on the northwest corner of the front yard, it's owned by the commercial. It's also in the air perimeter road corridor of the lake district, say that in my chest. Um, they, um, they are, they're in the gas section, they have recently asked for certificate of occupancy beside their name, so they are very punctual, they apply their business licenses, um, very punctual. They have blocked their signage in October. They weren't able to get their wall signage, it meant specifications. They also were able to get one of the two pre standing signs they applied for, second one did not need specifications. They also applied for canopy signage that was two mirrors and two large as well. So, we talked about variances, they chose to ask for variances for additional wall signage as well as the field canopy signage. They have not chosen to pursue the field, I'm sorry, the additional pre standing signage from a variance standpoint at this point. We reviewed the variance application, the initial wall signage did not need a variance, it was something that I prefer yet, and they are aware of that. However, the field canopy signage does need a variance in order to process current. What they had asked for is a canopy sign, such as that, I don't know what the official name of that trademark or logo is, I can call it a sign. They are asking for a sign on the air perimeter sign as well as the east and the west canopies. They're asking for a friendly express sign on the front of the air perimeter sign, that's what I'm referring to as the front of the air perimeter sign. So, four signs, although, or generally, canopy signs, field canopy signs are allowed, one sign, one canopy sign per street front, should be more larger than sixteen square feet each sign. The sign is twenty four and a half square feet, so more or less than sixteen square feet, I can permit. So they're asking for a sign on the western and the eastern side canopy, twenty four and a half square feet each. They're also asking for a sign on the front of the air perimeter sign as well, so adding that twenty four and a half square feet to the friendly express, that is twenty nine point eight five square feet. They're asking for a total of sixty four point thirty five square feet of canopy signage for the front view of their sign, twenty sixteen square feet, and one sign is all the same. So, two creating and two large, and unfortunately staff, we reviewed requests, found no hardship, and recommend.
Oh, is, is this the same group that did the other gas station and alcohol calls from VW dealership?
North by Ross Road?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is that, um, and I'm, we might need to ask the, the applicant, but, um, is this essentially the same signage that is asked to be applied, that was applied already over there?
That I don't know, I've purchased a sign, um, I've purchased the applicant.
On the, on the existing one?
And now is that, again, the latest?
Okay, and, uh, that, my next question was, is that in the county?
In the county, yes.
Martin? Okay.
They have similar pre standing signs, they have similar wall signs, but I did not see canopy signage under that.
Okay.
Tracy, I got a quick question. Why does a variance application submitted in November take until February fifth to be heard?
The file deadline for each month, Z D O A is the twenty fifth of the month. So if they had made it by the twenty fifth of December, it would have appeared on the January docket. They were a few days shy, they were a few days late past that twenty fifth of December. Um, so unfortunately, we weren't able to slip it into the January docket, so that's why it's on the February docket. Reason being, we have public hearing deadlines, but we have to advertise, we need to, we have to put out the public hearing signs as well as send out certified letters to the J S property owners, to give us time to meet that requirement as well as to send out the cases to staff for competent consideration from staff. It takes that long.
Is it advertised for consecutive weeks in the balance of the times?
I believe, I believe once, maybe twice.
Admitted once or twice?
Right, and it has to be between either, I think it's between either fifteen or more than fifteen, or perhaps nine a year.
No, less than fifteen, no more than forty five days.
So the cutoff is the twenty fifth.
Right.
So if it had been submitted November twenty fifth, then everything starts running in December for a hearing on the first Tuesday in January.
Correct, yes, sir.
Any other questions, staff? Thank you. Is advocate here?
Renee, you were about to sign a sixteen, well, three teams, we will, uh, change your questions about one oh five, this is one of the express one oh six. The signs are not empty because they started their construction to just get the necessary signs so they can open, whether they are in production.
Let me clarify, um, I drove by the city, the city side, of course, there weren't any canopy signs on the canopy, because that hasn't been permitted yet. But I also drove by the county rail lines on North by Ross Road, there weren't any signs on that.
Goodness, they're in production, it's not in the way for, so they'll be going to I D M.
Okay, so the signs that you are proposing to put on North by Ross Road have been permitted?
They're for that route, they're not in production.
So they would, the, the county allow that much signage on the channel?
Right.
Okay.
Um, in addition, it's not in there, it doesn't show hardship because of your zoning, but, um, this marketing and branding is set up just like Shell, E P, Marathon, so they need this rain guide for these new sizes. Um, the blue little square that you see, the only thing that's illuminated on that is the yellow. The blue is like an inflation. Um, the white letters are fun and interesting, I'm sorry, I made everybody the type of, of site that already had all of these. I don't like them on my desk, but I have one copy, if I want to look. So you can see, that's what the letters are designed for, and some version is just a part of the paint, just the yellow part. So currently, they have two sides, that's, um, it runs like, if two of them runs, they have two in Wake Forest, that are designed just like this. Uh, the one right down the road, which will have those signs on them by the end of the month, and propose in the next year and a half, two more sides.
Tracy, can you come up with any color according to the town?
The way the canopy is built, I have to build, they haven't cut a section of the canopy out for me to fit that sign behind it. So that square is the piece of metal that's the main, is the overall size of my sign cabinet. The logo is slightly smaller, but not much, it's the overall.
Can we keep this?
Yeah, sir, sir. I have a question. Um, when we had the signage of Walmart on the, that's the grocery store on Gasser Road, um, is that the city or was that the county?
City.
City, so that's why we heard that, because if it was in the county, those signs, those bigger signs that they wanted, would have been. How much is the difference between what the county allows and what the city allows, it's a lot.